I'd like to call the meeting to order, please. If everyone would please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance in a moment of silence. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Constitution, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Good evening, everybody. If you'd have a seat, welcome to our reorganization meeting and December work session. At this time, I'd like to introduce Mrs. Craig and the elementary choir.
My name is Alex Craig, I'm in the elementary choir. Back there is Mrs. Marcel, so she's the assistant director and our companyist. And this is our elementary choir. This is our second performance this month out of four, and it's just, it's concert season, so we're here to perform. We have two pieces for you. Our first tonight is "Sleigh Ride," and our second is "Touch the Sky" from the movie "Brave."
(singing) Just hear the sleigh ride, dreaming, dreaming, feeling true. Come on, it's lovely weather for a sleigh ride together with you. Outside the snow is falling and friends are calling you. Come on, it's lovely weather for a sleigh ride together with you. Giddyup, 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 let's go, let's do the show. We're riding in a wonderland of snow. Giddyup, 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 it's friend, just holding your hand. We're riding in a song to the song of the witchery fairyland. Our cheeks are nice, so cozy and comfy, because we are we. Birds gather up together and birds of feather will tweet. Just hear the bells, the horns, and sing a chorus or two. When old winds are calling and the sky is clear and bright, misty clouds are singing, I can see me out into the light. I will ride, I will fly, chase the wind and touch the sky. I will fly, chase the wind and touch the sky. La, 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 la. Where darkness hides secrets and mountains are fierce and bold, deep waters hold reflections of times lost long ago. I will hear their stories, they hold my old dreams. Here's from the seeds that seed me and the flowers that seed us. I will ride, I will fly, chase the wind and touch the sky. I will fly, chase the wind and touch the sky.
Now, accept the motion to establish school board meeting dates for 2018 as per the attached document.
Motion.
Second? Thank you. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. I will entertain a motion for adjournment.
Some move.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, that meeting is adjourned, December 5th work session this evening. Do we have to do another? We don't need to do-
Just call it order.
Okay, alright. Just a call to order, okay. Alrighty. Do we have any public- we do have public recognition this evening, I believe.
Yes.
Is Kristy here?
Yes. Yes, Mrs. Bilderback is here.
Okay, alright. Mrs. Kristy Bilderback, High Cliff Elementary Principal, will introduce some folks here, or at least one individual-
Oh, yeah.
For an award. Kristy, all yours.
Good evening. I'm Kristy Bilderback, the principal of High Cliff Elementary, and it is my pleasure to honor the winner of the holiday card contest, Ella Neme. Ella, would you come up, please, sweetie? So, hopefully you've had an opportunity to see the amazing holiday card that Emma made. Here is a framed copy of Ella for you to keep and enjoy. And as I was talking to Ella about entering the contest, she told me that she's been entering for the past few years. She just started at High Cliff in third grade, the middle of third grade, so she didn't have the opportunity to enter, but she entered in fourth grade, and in fifth grade, and then in sixth grade. And in fourth and fifth grade, she actually was a finalist both years, correct? And then this year, she was the winner. So, that was very exciting. And I asked Ella what her inspiration was for drawing- tell me how to say the word again. A mandala. Mandala, okay. Mandala's. And she said when she was in second grade, she was at a toy store with her grandma, and she saw a book with mandalas on it, and ever since then, she's been drawing them, and she's learned a lot about them, including that they have to be symmetrical, and I think we can all agree, she's got it down. So Ella, congratulations. Wonderful. And so Ella, what we have for you is a framed picture of your amazing Christmas holiday card. We also have a Visa gift card for you, and we have a lot of your own copies. So, I will take this for you for a minute, and the board has something to present to you, so we're gonna head up there, okay? So...
Congratulations, you're quite the artist.
Yes, absolutely.
Congratulations, Ella.
I was one of the thousand who received it. It's beautiful.
Thank you.
Thanks. Thank you, Kristy.
Okay, we can move on to, are there any board member comments this evening? Anybody would like to make prior to the-
Can I just say one thing?
Oh, sure.
I'd like to welcome our two new board members, and welcome back our two older board members, not in age, but in time. And I think this is gonna be a fantastic year. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Dee.
Thanks, Dee.
Thank you.
Alright, and I do want- I think we have some distinguished guests in the audience this evening. We have some Ross Township commissioners here. Just wanted to say hello. Do we have anybody to speak on the public? I'm sorry. Go ahead, Mr. Newt.
On behalf of several veterans who participated in the Veterans Roundtable on November 17th, I'd like to thank Mr. Lieberman and Nate Wilkerson for putting a very fine program together. Veterans are very, very high on this, and I hope we do continue it. It was something that was initiated by Beth Williams four or five years ago.
Oh, longer than that.
Good. Thank you, Lou. Thank you so much.
Is it longer than that?
Might be.
No? I thought so.
No, the roundtable was five years ago.
Oh, the roundtable, okay. I missed that part of it.
Nobody signed up.
We don't have anybody signed up for public comments on the agenda, so we'll now move to the approval of the minutes for November 2nd, 2017, work session slash legislative meeting. Do I have a motion to-
Motion.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion on those minutes? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Now, we can turn it over to our wonderful student representatives, Grace and Olaf. You have the microphone.
Good evening, everyone. As seen throughout the year, our school is flourishing with an abundance of activities throughout the school. For example, the digital immersion theater is showing more free double features this month. That is in the astronomy room. The films are aimed towards all age groups, so whether you're in preschool or whether you're an adult, you are free to go see those. Also, the Keystone exams are occurring this week, and they continue through next week. And additionally, as we speak, actually, the high school band ensembles are performing in the auditorium across the school. The high school choir ensembles are also preparing for their holiday concerts as well, which will be on Monday, the 18th, at 7:00 PM. On Sunday, a number of groups, including the Drama Club, the Choir, and the North Hills alumni, Chris Jamison, performed at the Barnes Noble Book Fair, which was- It was made by Mrs. Washington, a well-known English teacher at North Hills, as many of you know. This Saturday evening, the North Hills Drama Club will also be holding their annual magical dinner, which is used to fundraise for the North Hills Choir. There will be food, music, and entertainment, and finally, the long-awaited holiday break begins December 22nd and runs through January 1st.
Okay, so to start things off, we'll go ahead and recognize that nine of our football players made the All-Section Team from North Hills. Damon Thompson, Matt McHartan, Jason Biswick- oh, sorry, Ten, and Trevor Hartman all received honorable mention. Le'irion Martezic, Tyler Brennan, Alex Glatz, and John Hodnich were all named to the second team. Melvin Blanks, Jason Heinauer, and Jeff Golupsi were all named to the first team. Now, our winter sports are officially underway. They all begin their competitive seasons this Friday, December 8th. Wrestling, Boys and Girls Basketball, Varsity Cheer, and Varsity Swimming all have events this Friday, so it'll be an exciting night. Wrestling begins their season with their Shartiers Houston Tournament. Boys Basketball Teams begin their North Hills Tip-Off Classic, which will run throughout the weekend. Girls Basketball kicks off their season with a game against Brashear High School. Boys and Girls Varsity Swimming and Diving has their first meet of the season against West Allegheny, one of their longtime rivals. Best of luck to our North Hills Winter Sports Teams in their upcoming competitions.
Thank you. How's your year going? Everything okay?
Yep. It's good.
You look good. Okay, thank you. Alright, let's move on to Solicitor's Report if we have anything for the meeting.
We addressed contract and personnel matters in the executive session just prior to this meeting.
Thank you. Thank you for reminding us that. We can now move on to Superintendent's Report and the December Points of Pride. Dr. Manarino?
Yep, we're gonna try that from here. Hopefully, this works. Over here? Okay. North Hills Middle School has become one of only 400 schools around the world to be named an Apple Distinguished School due to its innovative learning environment and creative integration of technology using iPads. In addition, 100% of the North Hills Middle School teachers are now Apple-certified educators, so congratulations to our middle school. The high school speech and debate team kicked off their season with three trophies at the Upper St. Clair High School Novice Tournament. Congratulations to our speech and debate students. High Cliff Elementary's third graders presented an innovator wax museum as part of the grade's literacy unit. Students read about inventions and inventors and chose an interesting person to research. Each prepared a display and a speech to inform museum visitors in a creative way about their history-making inventor. Our high school science department welcomed nearly 100 educators from throughout Western Pennsylvania for the Pennsylvania Science Curriculum Council's workshop. High school science teachers Laura Clark, Jen D. Pasqual, and Karen Gramske served as presenters on the various biology and science topics, and the workshop was brought to North Hills High School by our high school science teacher, Jen Ortiz, who oversaw the day-long event and serves as the council's executive committee. Middle school teachers Joe Welsh and Vicki Trushen were featured presenters at this year's Association for Middle School Level Education Conference in Philadelphia, and they shared their oral history project that combined both history and English lessons, and utilized iPad devices to innovate the traditional grade-eight research project. As we mentioned, our North Hills Middle School welcomed veterans for our Veterans Day Roundtable event at the middle school. The attendees shared their wide range of experiences with seventh graders as they learned about world geography, climates, military roles, and responsibilities, as well as some life lessons and firsthand accounts. And thank you, Mr. Newt, for not only your service, but also for being a part of that event. You can see Mr. Newt is photographed in two of those pictures above, but thank you, Mr. Newt. We were fortunate to have a special guest with us. The music department hosted the class of 1962 alum and Northwestern University and Roosevelt University professor, and a nationally prominent author, editor, and conductor, John Thomas Thompson. Mr. Thompson offered his insight and advice to our musicians during his special rehearsal with the Wind Ensemble before conducting the PMEA Honors Band. And we just saw our holiday card winner, and this is a copy of her card, which is really, really beautiful. We had about 100 cards that were presented to us from our students this year, and this was our winner. And so, congratulations to Ella for winning the North Hills School District Holiday Card Contest. And as I said to her, we send this card to about 1,000 people. Congratulations to the North Hills Competitive Cheer Team, who won first place in the Non-Tumbling Division at the 30th Annual Pennsylvania State Cheerleading Championships. High Cliff Elementary families donated 764 pounds of Halloween treats to Bo Six Battalion. The local nonprofit will use the treats and holiday packages for U.S. troops. Ross Elementary students donated a carload of needed items for the same effort, and McIntyre's PTSO sponsored a Halloween candy drive for Operation Gratitude. The first-ever collection netted more than 330 pounds of candy. High school class officers and National Honor Society and Hands-for-Service Club members spearheaded the Lend a Helping Can Food Drive to benefit the North Hills Backpack Initiative. Middle School Service Club held a building-wide food drive and collected more than 800 food items in addition to monetary donations from staff members. Together, the efforts provided nearly 200 Thanksgiving dinners for North Hills School District families. High Cliff Elementary honored those who have served our nation during their annual Veterans Day celebration, and had a total of 88 veterans who were in attendance for the event. Following a special breakfast, many of our veterans met with our students, answered their questions, and even read books to them. McIntyre Elementary's first-grade students crafted placemats and turkey centerpieces out of tissue boxes and turkey candy cups for residents at The Haven, a senior citizen residence facility in Ross Township. The Board of Education member, Arlene Bender, was recognized by A.W. Beatty Career Center with an Award of Distinction for her commitment to promoting career and technical education. Congratulations, Mrs. Bender.
Thank you.
Your Lifetime Achievement Award.
Thank you.
The high school's FBLA members raised $534 for the Alzheimer's Association during a one-day-only Big Cookie Sale at the high school. That's new. That's not in my slides here. So, we had a book fair. We raised funds for Children Hospital Foundation to support the district's libraries and literacy programs, and the event featured performances from our student ensemble, special appearances from alum Chris Jamison, who met and greet with 11 of local authors. And this was done by Carmen Washington, correct? So, this is a very successful event that she does every year at a Barnes and Noble. There we go. More than 208th graders participated in the middle school Physical Education Department's annual Turkey Tournament. The tournament raised about $1,000 for the North Hills Backpack Initiative to support local families in need this holiday. High Cliff Elementary kindergarten students and their fourth-grade buddies created cards that were included in Thanksgiving meal deliveries for Meals on Wheels recipients. And a reminder that all North Hills School District Elementary families are encouraged to attend the Celebration of Learning on December 7th in all of our elementary buildings from 5:00 to 8:00. And that is our Points of Pride, Tradition, and Excellence for the month of November.
Thank you, Dr. Manarino. Okay, we can now move on to education, and that would be Mrs. Bender.
Possibly.
Okay.
Is this it?
That's it?
I'm sorry, I got a new iPad, and I'm having a problem. Oh, I got it. Thank you. Thank you for your patience. Mrs. Beth Williams, our high school principal, has a special presentation for us this evening relative to- well, let's hear.
Good evening. If you recall, about a year ago, I came to the board with a special request regarding our commencement caps and gowns. And my request was that we change all of our gowns to one solid color, the color red, to promote the fact that we are unified in all meeting North Hills School District's graduation requirements. Also, to alleviate the problem of my young ladies trying to find an all-white dress that they would actually want to wear again at some point in their lifetime. Having said that, the other piece of that was Jostens, our cap-and-gown distributor, came to us and let us know that students now can decorate or basically plan their own commencement gowns. So, without further ado, I am gonna allow our senior class officers, President Maria Orlea, Vice President Shreya Sjaswal, Secretary Olivia Lau, our Treasurer Lauren Rebel is actually down in the middle school auditorium, performing with the band. Come on up, gang, and why don't you share with the board what you have designed, and we can unveil that.
Thank you.
Hello, everyone. So, for our gown, one of the reasons why we chose this gown is to maintain the red and white traditions of the North Hills School District. Even though our gowns, we wanted them to be one solid color, we did add the white bands on the side to enforce, like, our school pride in our colors. So, that's one of the reasons why we chose this gown.
One of the things we wanted to emphasize this year is class unity, and we want to equally congratulate all the boys and girls who graduate this year, all the success that they've gone through.
And then, we also wanted to keep our design simple and elegant, and this also keeps our costs minimal, and there's also no change in the cost to students paying for these gowns. And it really gave us an opportunity to, like, be able to choose our designs and have some creativity into it, and a lot of freedom to, like, design our gown, so we hope everybody has this opportunity from the years to come.
Excuse me. Mrs. Williams, did you say that they designed those?
They did. We actually met- they met with the Jostens rep, and they gave them a program where they could do a lot with it. They could design, they could add, whether it was stripes, they could add white here around the cuff. They could actually add as much as they wanted to or as little as they wanted to. So, they actually came up with a cover of different designs, shared it with the entire senior class. What are your favorites? Jostens then marked up, I believe, two gowns for them to vote on then as a class, and this is the one that they did select. They remained or kept the hood. We've had the hood as a tradition most years. Actually, I believe Dr. Manarino is the one who designed that hood. And they really liked the hood and what that symbolized, because it does have the crest on it.
And that's in the back?
The hood? This.
Yes, this is the front.
Oh, that's the front?
Mm-hmm, and that would be in the front with regard to that.
Oh, okay.
So, they did a really nice job, and like I said, they included everyone in the entire senior class by allowing them to go ahead and vote on it. And I think it was a nice way here, early at the beginning of the year, to really bring the class together and actually get them very excited already for commencement. So, they did an awesome job. They really did.
Thank you. I like those a lot. Come this way, so-
Thank you very much. This is mine, okay.
Thank you very much.
I bet it was fun working on it.
Thank you.
Yeah, that turned out really cool. I like what you guys designed. Thank you.
Well, really? They don't have to work. That's pretty cool.
That's what I was just gonna ask, because this- every class is going to redesign. That's pretty cool. That's very cool. Oh, that's very cool. This is pretty much the same. Yeah, that's- yeah, that's good, yeah. So, they can keep the same design, or they can change it. It's up to them.
They think they might want to do. And so, you can see in that expansion how that kind of takes place. Unfortunately, in our program of studies, we've removed American Sign Language. And the reason why we've removed American Sign Language from the program of studies is that the teacher that holds the American Sign Language certification has chosen to retire. So, working backwards through the whole scheduling process, it's gonna be extremely difficult for us to offer that for students to choose as an elective, not knowing whether we're gonna be able to find a certified teacher to fill that spot. We're gonna replace that spot, which is a special education teacher. And if we are fortunate enough to find somebody with an American Sign Language certification, we do our interviewing process in March and April. That gives us plenty of time to be able to notify the students to add this course if they so choose. But if we put it out there, and they schedule it, and Dr. Barkovich is here as a counselor looking at me, he knows what we're gonna say with the master schedule. It is gonna be extremely difficult, too impossible, to tear students out of a course that we have scheduled and built the entire master schedule around if we don't have a teacher that's able to teach it. So, unfortunately, we have to remove it from the program of studies for students to be able to enroll in it for next year. But if we are fortunate to find that certification, or a current teacher would be able to get that certification, then we would definitely offer the course. So, we are not deleting it from our curriculum. We're just removing it from the program for students to be able to schedule in the 18, 19 school year, and hopefully, we will be able to find somebody with that certification. But unfortunately, there's not a whole lot of people in the state of Pennsylvania that hold that certification. So, that's the negative of a tremendous program of studies that just added upon a whole wealth of great courses that we already offered. So, that's what's in the high school program of studies.
Excuse me. Can I add to the fact, the ASL class, that we would be willing to open it up as a club again? It originally started as a club. If we find somebody that's been through the program, knows, it could even be a former student of ours. Some of our students absolutely loved that program. So, hopefully, we'll be able to maintain it. It'll come back as a club, because that was very well-received in the community.
Thank you. Mrs. Reed? Did anybody else have any- Dr. Nolish, do you have any comments on-
I know, I just wanted to make sure that we were, you know, that we had a chance to, you know, to hear the details about that.
Got you.
Because I think we've got some really exciting opportunities for our students here.
For sure.
I also like the fact that you didn't mention, but that you've reduced the double-block courses now to one period per year, and I think that was difficult for a number of students to be able to schedule when you had a double-block for a half of a year. And I think particularly with all the new things that we've offered, that's, you know, that's kind of a logistical change, but I think it's a really important one, because it's gonna give our students more flexibility, so- I just thought this was worth taking a few minutes to make sure we talked about what's happening at the curricular level.
Alright, I guess we'll have to entertain some- I'm sorry.
Do we have a motion to second?
We've already seconded, yeah.
Yeah.
We've already seconded. Okay. All in favor of a motion?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Arlene. We can now move on to athletics and activities. We have one item on the agenda there. It's the PIA-A-A classification upgrade from 5A to 6A for Boys Basketball. That is a classification, it's the highest classification, and this particular request is obviously is supported by Coach Gabus, our basketball coach, and our athletic director and our superintendent for the decision to play in 6A as opposed to our enrollment, which is determined by PIA-A-A Class 5A. So, we're actually playing up, but it does give us an opportunity to play with all the schools that we're very familiar with in the northern area. And it's good, because transportation issues aren't as difficult as they would be in Class 5A, because that footprint is so much wider. So, anyway, that being said, I would like to entertain a motion to approve the athletics and activities items number one.
Some move.
Is there any discussion on this? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, Mrs. Bender or Mr. Newt, there doesn't appear to be have anything under Beatty, but is there anything you want to bring up, bring us up to speed with Beatty at this point? Nothing? Okay. Arlene?
On the 14th is the Beatty Holiday Dinner, and everybody's invited, I think.
Yes.
Laurie gave everybody an invitation. It is a really nice evening out. Board members from all the northern-area school districts go, so it gives us an opportunity to meet and greet with the members of other boards of education as well. So, I'll be there. Arlene and Lou will be there. Hopefully, you could all join us. It is a really nice night at Beatty.
I can't think of a better date night.
There you go.
And also, I think it's important to know that the board members from Beatty, who will not be returning this year, either due to the fact that they did not run or did not win their election, they are honored. And it is really- it's a tribute. It's a tribute to them, and I think one of the things that I just find just really wonderful about it is the students who come to serve the meals, and it's just really wonderful. We have to- well, we all know how I feel about Beatty. It's just a wonderful, wonderful place. Thank you.
Thank you. We can now move on to Personnel. That would be Mr. Kelly.
Thank you, Mr. August. Personnel items are discussed in the executive session, and therefore, the superintendent recommends, and I so move, that we approve Personnel Items 1 through 5, 1 through 6.
6.
Second.
Is there any discussion on the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Kelly. We can- there is- we don't have anything under Community Intergovernmental Relations, so we'll move over that unless somebody has any comments about that individually, there being none. Mrs. Reed, it looks like we don't have anything under Policy this evening. So, we can move on to Finance. Dr. Nolish?
Okay, thank you. We have 11 items, so I will follow Mrs. Bender's lead as she did with Academics, and I will list all the items, and then if we can have any questions or discussions at the end. The first is the General Fund Bills. The second is Construction Fund Bills. The third is Capital Project Fund Bills. Fourth are Budget Transfers. Fifth is Payroll for the Month of November. Sixth is the 2016 Westview Borough Real Estate Tax Collector Audit Report Acceptance. And I should just point out, there were no findings in that. Seven is the 2016 Township of Ross Real Estate Tax Collector Audit Report Acceptance. And once again, it was an unqualified audit, no findings. Bid Award for Copy Paper. We have recommending the lowest bidder for dual-purpose copy paper. Nine is a bid award for OEM Toner for our HP printers. Again, we have the lowest responsible bidder for that. And actually, those are the nine items, and 10 and 11 are informational items, a revenue summary for 2017-18, as of October 2017. And the- I guess this is a comparison back to 2016-17. So, those are two informational items only. So, I would like to, at this time, say that the superintendent recommends, and I so move, that the board approve Finance Items 1 through 9.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. There doesn't appear to be anything under Support Services, Mrs. Spade, at least I believe there is. I do have one announcement. I probably should have made this during the Personnel, but I am pleased to announce that we have an agreement with our Labor Union, ESPA. We think it's a very favorable agreement for both sides, very responsible. And I want to thank both sides of the table, especially those union reps that negotiated for the union itself. I thought they were done in a very professional manner. I speak for myself, but I believe the board would agree with that. And I'm just- we're just very pleased to get that behind us. And, you know, I'm proud to say, as a board member and on behalf of the board, we have Labor Harmony in the district, and that's a good thing. And it appears to be that everything appears, at least from the contract itself, that we believe is, again, it's a responsible contract from both sides. One that protects our taxpayers, and also does, I think, a very fair and fine job for the employees that are in that particular- that are in that particular bargaining. So again, congratulations to both sides on that particular arrangement and coming to agreement with that. There being no other items, do you want to make a comment? Sure.
I'd like to make two comments. The first comment is that particularly for the new board members, we usually utilize the past liaisons persons for the committees. We asked today for everyone to fill out what committees that they would like to be on, and we will be assigning those before the next meeting.
Yeah, probably.
Mr. August. And the other thing is that I just wanted to thank those of you on the board who supported me for vice president. And I promise you that Ann and I have worked together for many years. We've worked together as president and vice president a number of times. And our goal is to have this board continue to only bring excellence to North Hills School District. And that's it. Thank you.
Before we close the meeting, this is an opportunity for any additional public comments. Anybody who would like to address the board without items based on the agenda? Did anybody sign up to do so, Laurie?
No one signed.
Great. There being none, I'll make a motion to adjourn the meeting?
I'll second that.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Meeting adjourned. Thank you.
Merry Christmas, everybody.